Okay, at this time I call to order this public hearing of the Bonner County Hearing Examiner on October 18th, 2023. The time is 1:30 in the afternoon. We are located in the third floor conference room of the Bonner County Administration Building, 1500 Highway 2, Sandpoint, Idaho. We are streaming online via Zoom and YouTube. Is there anyone in attendance in need of special assistance to see, hear, or participate in these proceedings? Please take note of the hearing procedures on the screen. I will submit my written decision within five business days of this hearing. At this time, I'd like to lead the room in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Are there any changes? Well, actually, there is a change to the agenda. Today, we're going to do File V 001523, the variance street setback first, and then we'll move the conditional use permit to second. Is there any other changes? Um, are there any announcements?
Not right now.
Not right now. Are there any corrections or changes to the October 4th, 2023 hearing minutes? And I declare them approved. Alrighty, we are going to start today with File V 0015-23, a variance street setback. The applicants are requesting a variance to the street setback of two feet where 25 feet is required. The project site is 0.367 acres. The property is owned rural service center. The project is located off Second Street in Shady Pines Loop in Section 31 Township 60 North Range 4 West Boise Meridian, and I have no conflict of interest with this project. So Alex, it is all yours.
So this is a variance for a street setback over in Priest Lake. The applicant is requesting a two-foot, 10-foot, 15-foot, 18-foot, and 20-foot setback from the street where 25 is required for five accessory buildings. The site is located off of Second Street and Shady Pines Loop in Priest Lake, and the applicant and property owner is Ivan Frederickson. This is the site plan showing the setbacks to the street. This is a .179 acre lot. It is a land use designation is resort community. The zoning is recreation. It is accessed off of Second Street and Shady Pines Loop, both Bonner County-owned and maintained right-of-way. It does contain some slopes, does not have any mapped wetlands, does not have any waterfront, and it is within special flood hazard area, Zone D. It is served by an individual well. It is served by outlet bay sewer and water for sewage. It is served by a West Priest Lake Fire District, served by Northern Lights Incorporated for Power, and West Bonner School District Number 83 for schools. These are the standards that were reviewed, or that this application was reviewed against. These are the agencies that were routed on September 12th. We received a comment from Bonner County Road and Bridge, and we received a no comment from Idaho Department of Water Resources. All other agencies did not respond. The first criteria for variances is to describe whether conditions apply to the property that do not apply generally to other properties in the same zone vicinity, which conditions are a result of lot size, shape, topography, or other circumstances over which the applicant has no control. The applicant stated that the property is pie-shaped and is cornered by two roads, Second Street and Shady Pines Loop. Both the garage and mobile home were there when the property was purchased. Any structures were built, we built, excuse me, are under 400 square, under the 400 square foot requirement, and we had no idea we violated any setbacks. Staff response was that the property has some map slopes between 15 and 29%. The property abuts two streets, both of which are public right-of-ways and require 25-foot setback, which can make developing the property difficult. The property is .367 acres, which could present challenges of meeting setbacks if the buildings were to be moved. The applicant is requesting a variance for buildings that have already been built. The second criteria is to explain how special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant. The applicant stated that, no, the parcel in question has remained the same size as when it was purchased. Staff, the staff analysis was that the subject property has not been changed or altered by the property owners. The property was obtained by the applicant in 2001 per warranty deed instrument number 582647. However, the buildings in question were built or placed by the applicant. Per the applicant, they were not aware of the setbacks on their property according to the Bonner County Revised Code 12-410A. The minimum setbacks shall apply to all structures as defined in Section 12-819 of this title, except as otherwise noted. Per the applicant, all buildings that they placed on the property are under 400 square feet and thus did not require a building location permit. However, they are still required to meet the setbacks. The applicant submitted a declaration of exempt structures application with the Bonner County Planning Department, DES 2016-0292, which did not require a building location permit and did not have an inspection, but relied on the applicant's to meet the setback requirements. The third criteria is to explain how granting the variance is not in conflict with the public interest in that it will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or materially interest to properties or improvements in the vicinity of the subject parcel or lot. The applicant stated that no problems with any buildings we constructed because of the size and the purpose of any of them. The staff analysis was that Bonner County Road and Bridge has indicated in their review letter that buildings close to the right-of-way can create issues with maintaining the right-of-way. No other agency comments were received at the time of the staff report that indicated that granting this variance for the reduced setbacks for the purpose of future construction will have any negative impact on public health, safety, or welfare. We received two public comments. Both of them were from the applicant and his spouse. And staff concluded that this project is consistent with Bonner County Revised Code based upon the following: as a result of setback requirements per the Bonner County Code and the size of the lot, and the property being constrained by two roads, both of which require 25-foot setback from the edge of their respective easements. The building envelope is restrictive, restrictive which makes developing the lot challenging. Granting the variance will allow the applicant to develop their property similarly to other surrounding properties. The applicant placed buildings that were exempt from building location permits due to their size being smaller than 400 square feet. However, BRCRC 12-410A states that all buildings must meet setbacks in their designated zone. Applicant did submit a declaration of exempt structures application with the Bonner County Planning Department. Over those applications were not reviewed for compliance with setbacks at that time. These are the conditions of approval. I can take any questions if you have any.
Okay, so at this time, would the applicant like to make any kind of a reason? Have anything to say? Yes. Go to the mic and state your name for the record.
Ivan D. Frederickson. 33 Shady Pines Loop, Second Street. I purchased the property in 2001. We have done nothing but improve the property. It was kind of a beat-up trailer that we did a lot of work on, my wife and I, inside, outside, and everything else. I mean, we've done nothing to make anything look shabby or, you know, bad appearance. We've done the best we can with everything. And I did call down here two separate times to find out what the setback was from the road, and I never got a call back. So I assumed where we did place the buildings, that we were far enough off the road not to have any problem whatsoever. So, you know, I appreciate this, this hearing being held for us and, and everything. We've had a lot of help from the building and planning here, and I just request to get that variance, and it's very important to us. We've had a lot of sleepless nights over this, as my bags under my eyes will probably prove it. That's about all I really have to say. I just want to thank you for the opportunity.
So I do have one question. Alex, can you bring back up that site plan for him?
Sure.
Oh, sorry. So where it shows on the site plan, though, it's pointing at the building that is two feet from the property line slash street setback. What building is that?
I believe that's the metal, the steel garage we had constructed there. We had a company in Spokane that came up and put that in, and when they looked at it, they said, yeah, this would be fine, it's far enough off the road and everything. But obviously, you know, they didn't know the rules and everything else. And since then, we did have cement poured there, so, you know, we've got quite of investment in that.
So that's sitting on a cement foundation?
Yes, it is. So to move it, we'd have to tear it down. I mean, it, and we put a lot of money in that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're more than welcome to, if you have anything you want to say. We just need you to step up to the mic as well, so that it can be recorded.
I'm Shawna Harmon, Ivan Frederickson's wife. That building that is in question, that's the one that we came in and sat down with someone, and then at that time, whoever, I can't remember who we talked to, it was in 16, said we had an exception or exemption or whatever, and to go ahead and build it. So we thought we had done everything right on that building, so. Otherwise, we never would put it up in the first place.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'm going to read the rules of testimony. If you wish to testify, you will need to please state your name for the record. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per person. You may give your three minutes to another person, so they have up to six minutes to speak. No one will be allowed more than six minutes. Public comments are limited to the specifics of this application. If you agree with another speaker, please just acknowledge agreement, no need to repeat the information again. Any personal or derogatory comments about another person or their position will not be allowed. Clapping, cheering, or braying will not be allowed either. Is there anyone that has a written statement they would like entered into the record?
There's nobody online.
No one online either? Okay. I don't see anyone else in here that might provide supporting, neutral, or opposing testimony, and there's no one online. So you guys don't have anybody to rebut? That's always a nice point. Okay. All right, so at this time, I'm going to close the hearing to public testimony. And I'm going to jot down some notes. Is it okay for me to ask Alex a question at this point? Okay. Do you, Alex, do you know if there is any record of that 2016 meeting regarding that building? From the planning department's side?
The only record would be the permit that was filed.
Okay.
I don't think that there would be any.
Which would be the exemption, is that what you're?
Yeah, so it was a declaration of exempt structures, which basically allowed, basically was saying, I don't have to get a building location permit for this, but this is where I'm going to be placing the structure.
Okay, but it, it also states in there clearly about the setbacks? Those exemptions are the application for that?
We don't have that application anymore, so I'm not aware of that. I believe, but I believe it did, if I'm not mistaken.
What was the question? Sorry.
Well, I'm wondering about that application for exemption, if it stated anywhere in there in writing about the setbacks still have to be adhered to? It does?
But there was no inspection process, there was no fee associated with that. It was simply a mechanism to capture more buildings so that the assessors would be known, or so it would be known to the assessors, could be shared that information with them when new structures are being placed. It was later changed from the exempt structure, or that declaration of exempt structure, to a small structure permit, so there's a review and a small fee with it now. And those are only for non-habitable, so there's no dwelling or any kind of dwelling, they couldn't have used that permit process. The only other record we would have would be like a sign-in sheet in the, in the department.
Right.
If he wants to track it down, we could, but it would just show their names with a date next to it.
No, no, yeah, you just.
Yeah. I think that's the only thing I can think of, when it would be like a record of, other than the permit, a record of someone's visit to the department.
And then do we have, I know Roden Bridge isn't here to answer this question, do we have any ideas how Roden Bridge has handled that insofar as maintenance of that area? Because the building has been there since roughly 2016, been there a while, sounds like, and I'm just wondering what they've done.
I believe they, they may have addressed it in their letter.
Well, that's what I was trying to figure out. He just went.
But I was going to say, it may have been, that's something that Roden Bridge has been tackling recently with bulk increases and everything. It's mostly, mostly has to do with snow storage and things along those lines, but I think, I, I'm not sure.
Okay. Yeah, because he didn't really, I mean, it actually looks like a letter about, I've seen before referencing these, just with a few changes, so I didn't see anywhere where they talk about what they've actually already been doing over the last several years. Okay, thank you.
Sure. And I'm not sure if Mr. Frederickson can.
Well, that's what I was just going to ask Jake, is it okay if I bring the applicant back up for more, for another question?
Open it back up for public testimony.
Okay, so how do I do that? Just say?
Open it up for public testimony.
Okay, so I'm going to open this back up for public testimony, because I have a question that popped in my head for the applicant. Mr. Frederickson, do you mind stepping up there real quick? You might be able to answer this more for me.
Hopefully, yeah.
And then you just have to state your name again, sorry.
Yes, Ivan D. Frederickson.
Okay, thank you. So what I'm wondering is, do you know what Roden Bridge has done to handle the snow, et cetera, right around that corner?
No, I know a couple of times they have knocked down the street sign there.
Okay.
But other than that.
Do they put the snow when they're plowing?
Yeah, they've, they've got plenty of room to put the snow. It doesn't affect that building whatsoever.
Okay, that, that was my question.
No problem at all.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Is there anyone online?
Could I add one more thing?
Oh, please do.
We've had a lot of good responses from our neighbors, because that sign was posted in front of our yard, like we were kind of criminals. Everybody's coming by, what happened and all that? We told them, and they were all supportive of us. So none of them showed up, but we've never had anybody say anything negative to us about whatsoever.
Okay.
And that's about it.
Thank you, appreciate that. So no one online? Okay, and no new people in the audience, so I'm going to close it back to, close the hearing back to, or close the hearing to public testimony once again. Sorry. Okay. Okay. Okay, so Roden Bridge, their concern was specifically the two-foot street setback, which is basically the garage, the metal garage that the applicant was talking about that sits now on a concrete foundation. I definitely understand their concern there, however, what I had, was wondering about was the, because that building has been there for a while, what have they been doing in the interim to deal with that? And the applicant stated that, to their knowledge, they've always had space for the snow, and there hasn't been any issues brought to them specifically regarding that space, so I'm, I want Roden Bridge to know, I did take into account what they had to say, but since no one was here to tell me what they've been doing about it, I'm just going to go off of the comments that I've received, and which were the only comments that I've received from any agencies, so I do not feel that there has been any safety concerns brought up from any other, from anyone else, or any public comments to that effect. So, at this time, I approve this file V 00015-23 for a two-foot, 10-foot, 15-foot, 18-foot, and 20-foot setback from the street where 25 feet is required on five accessory buildings, finding that it is in accord with the Bonner County Revised Code as enumerated in the following conclusions of law. Conclusion one, conditions apply to the property that do not apply generally to other properties in the same zone or vicinity, which conditions are a result of lot size, shape, topography, or other circumstances over which the applicant has no control. Conclusion two, special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant. Conclusion three, the granting of this variance is not in conflict with the public interest in that it will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or materially interest to properties or improvements in the vicinity of the subject parcel or lot. And based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared, excuse me, I have hiccups, and testimony received at this hearing, I further adopt the following findings of fact and conclusions of law as written. The action that could be taken to obtain the variance is to complete the conditions of approval as adopted. This action does not result in any taking of private property. Okay, so at this time, I close File V 0015-23. And we are moving on to File CUP 0015-23, a conditional use permit, Sundance Storage LLC. The applicants are requesting a conditional use permit for boat storage and mini storage on a 2.7 acre, 2.78 acre lot. The property is owned recreation. The project is located off Kavanaugh Bay Road in Section 10 Township 59 North Range 4 West Boise Meridian, and I have no conflict of interest with this project, and it is all yours, Alex.
All right, let me get situated here, sorry.
No, now.
Okay, this is for CUP 0015-23, mini storage and boat storage. The applicant is Sundance Storage LLC. These are the, oh, I guess I'm not, am I not sharing my screen anymore? Oh, sorry.
It was sharing you.
Yep. There we go. These are the applicable standards at which this application was reviewed against. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for mini storage, boat storage, and rental warehouses. The, sorry, this, sorry. This proposal is located off of Kavanaugh Bay Road. The parcel is currently developed with an accessory structure. The parcel is currently zoned recreation, where mini storages and boat storages are conditionally permitted. This is a plotted lot. It is 2.78 acres. It's owned recreation. Land use designation is resort community. Property is accessed off Kavanaugh Bay Road, a Bonner County-owned and maintained public right-of-way. The site does contain map slopes. It does not contain mapped wetlands. It does not contain any mapped rivers, streams, or frontage on a lake, and the parcel is within special flood hazard zone X panel number 16017C0430F. The parcel is served with an individual well, an individual septic. It's served by Coolin Kavanaugh Bay Fire District, Northern Lights Incorporated for Power, and West Bonner School District Number 83. These are, this is the commercial use table for rental warehouses and mini storage and boat storage. You can see that they are conditionally approved, or conditionally allowed in the recreation zone with Notes 17 and 33. Note 17 is that sufficient land area is required to accommodate the proposed use, and the use and any appurtenant structures shall be so arranged on the land as to minimize any adverse effects on surrounding properties. The use shall not create particular hazards to adjacent properties. And Note Number Three is that maximum square footage for mini storage, boat storage, and rental warehouses on a single lot or parcel shall be 10,000 square feet for the rural service center and recreation districts. The maximum square footage for mini storage, boat storage, and rental warehouses in the commercial and industrial districts shall be unlimited. Staff response to Note Number 17 is the proposed commercial use is adjacent to an operating mini storage owned by the same entity. The lot is 2.78 acres. All buildings proposed will meet all property line setbacks required of the zoning district. The proposed storage building is 45-foot by 210-foot totaling 9,400 square feet. The, and for Note Number 33, the applicant is proposing a 45-foot by 210-foot storage facility totaling 9,450 square feet. The applicant would be allowed another 550 square feet of storage space, but would need to apply for a modification to this conditional use. Parking standards for warehouses, the minimum parking requirements is one space per 5,000 gross square feet of floor area, and to be within 800 feet of the principal use. The applicant is proposing a 9,450 square foot storage facility. The property is required to have one space per 5,000 square feet of storage area. The applicant will be required to have two dedicated parking spaces or 400 square feet dedicated to parking within 800, within 800 feet of the use. The applicant has roughly 14,700 square feet of available parking area within 800 feet of the use. These are the agencies that were routed. We received comments from Bonner County Road and Bridge and the Idaho Department of Water Resources. All other agencies did not reply. We received no public comment for this, for this project. And staff concluded that this project is consistent with Bonner County Revised Code based upon the information found in the background portion of the staff report. This conclusion is demonstrated in the findings of fact and conclusions of law. Conditions of approval have been added to facilitate the project's conformance to Bonner County Revised Code. The final decision rests with the governing body after the completion of the public hearing and consideration of all relevant oral and written testimony and evidence. And I can take any questions if you have any.
Do you know how long that currently exists, mini storage has been running or operating?
That is a good question. I'm not sure.
Okay, because I don't see the applicant.
But, yeah, but they do also, they have a conditional use permit for that as well.
For that one? Do you know when that was issued?
It's on Kavanaugh Bay, Kavanaugh Bay Road, 467.
Yeah, in Coolin?
No, there's been one up there, there's a recent one in like 2019?
I think that was.
2019, around there? It hasn't been a long time, if it's the same one. Is it like on the, where the two were?
No, it's on, it's kind of like on a bend of Kavanaugh Bay.
I know the one you're talking about is not that long.
Okay, nevermind. I don't know.
I can bring it on up, bring it up on.
Got it, Brian can do it.
Yeah, I looked on their website, it didn't give any about as, even in business.
I got it, Travis.
You got it?
So outlined in blue here is the subject parcel. This is the parcel north of here. I'm not sure, I don't have any.
Yeah, there wasn't any.
I'm assuming it just went into the LLC. That's usually what happens with GIS.
Okay. Okay, so I don't have any other questions for you, Alex. Thank you. I could be really rude and reread these rules of testimony, torture you guys. Ah, I won't, I imagine you've heard them a few times. Is there anyone on? Is there anyone online? No one else here? Okay, so I'm going to close the hearing to public testimony. And. Yeah, they get to read. Okay, so one of the things that stood out for me with this application was the continued economic development. I think that these small businesses provide a lot of valuable services to areas that we're seeing a lot of growth in, and we definitely are seeing it around the area. And they provide the kind of services that we don't normally think of. You don't think about storage and those kind of things when people are building houses and moving into an area. So I like to see these kind of things. One of the reasons I wanted to know how long they've been in business was just to see that they're potentially adding to what's already a successful business, which is a great thing to see as well. Okay, so, having said that, I approve this project file CUP 0015-23 for a rental warehouse, mini storage, and boat storage, finding that it is in accord with the general and specific objectives of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and the Bonner County Revised Code as enumerated in the following conclusions of law. This proposed conditional use permit is in accord with the Bonner County Conference, the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. This proposal was reviewed for compliance with the criteria and standards set forth at Title 12 BCRC Chapter 2, Subchapter 2.6, BCRC Chapter 3, Subchapter 3.3, BCRC Chapter 4, Subchapter 4.2.4.6, Chapter 7, Subchapter 7.2 and 7.3, Bonner County Revised Code. The proposed use will not create a hazard or will not be dangerous to persons on or to the adjacent property. The decision is based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. I further adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law as set forth in the staff report. Indirect planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this decision and to transmit all, to all interested parties. The action that could be taken to obtain the conditional use permit is to complete the conditions of approval as adopted. This action does not result in a taking of private property. And I think that's it. Okay, so at this time, I close file CUP 0015-23. All righty then. And schedule reminders, updates, announcements, anything like that? How are you guys surviving? Miss Jennebeen gone?
We're hanging in there.
I was going to say, you saw our, our organization.
So wait till she come back, that should be an announcement. Okay. Good, good, good. Hey, anything else? Anybody want to add? All right, so at this time, we are adjourned until the next planning hearing.